All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We don't have any announcements, Helen. So I have one announcement. I would like everyone to know that going forward, you know, our last two meetings were slightly, the blood pressures were higher than need be. And certain things happened that shouldn't have happened. And I personally have every intention to try and run the meeting maybe a little different. Also, I made a comment, I said, you know, I asked Ms. Wing if, Mrs. Wing that, if she's ever done anything other than being a teacher. That was taken well out of context. What I was trying to make the point is, have you ever had experience in the private sector and in that type of thing? No insult towards a teacher, ever. I would say thirty percent of my family are teachers, from grandparents, right, to siblings and some of my nieces. So, never would I insult a teacher. I know what I know because of teachers. So, and that's all I'll say about that. And so, again, my apologies for getting a little loud, I guess would be polite way to say it. And nothing personal was meant by it. But I will say that going forward, I would like, you know, I think when we have a large crowd in a meeting and we're open, we have discussions open, I think like Mr. Davis does at the town meeting, people that wish to speak could stand up behind Mrs. Coffin and wait and then take a seat at the microphone as their turn comes up. And I think it works well for Mr. Davis at the town meeting, and I would like to do that as well with our meetings. So, and that's it for announcements. We have minutes of warrants, May eighteenth, six p.m. And the only one absent was Mr. Lara, who's not here tonight anyway, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve the May eighteenth, six p.m. minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second is May eighteenth, the seven p.m. meeting.
I'm gonna ask if we can just table that.
Mm-hmm.
There was just a few things in there that caught my attention that I'd like to revise, reword, make note of. I'll send those over to Mrs. Coffin, highlighted with suggestions, and I can, just to see, I can send them to everyone, just what, I think they can be a bit different. With that said, I'd just like to hold that.
Okay. And then the last minutes would be May nineteenth at six p.m., which I was absent, so I'll have to abstain.
I don't think we, no, it's just you, I, and John.
We'll table those as well.
Have to table those.
While we're on that subject, do we have a date to appoint?
It's on the agenda for tonight, isn't it?
Okay, well, yeah, on the new businesses, Town Council.
Mr. Chairman, I do have warrants this evening as well.
Yep, so we'll get to that under the new business. So, approval of warrants, Helen.
First is for the payroll pay period ending May thirtieth. And they didn't total it for me. Oh, here it is, forty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and twelve cents. You'll notice that's a little higher than usual because the stipends are in it for all of the appointed boards and committees.
Okay.
The vendor warrant dated June first, in the amount of eighty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents. And the third is the payroll deductions for the last pay period, ending May eighteenth, in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars and two cents.
All right.
Motion to approve, said warrants.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No town boards are official scheduled for tonight, so first public forum, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Members of the Board of Selectmen, Madam Executive Secretary, residents of Millville. This is a memo to the Board of Selectmen that I have prepared as a resident of the town of Millville. With the Chairman's approval, I will read this memo for a record and do the record.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, Madam Executive Secretary, residents of Millville. I would like to take this opportunity to speak to each of you in a calm manner and express my personal feelings on how I felt and what I observed at the last Board of Selectmen. Since that date, I have been approached by several residents of Millville, expressing their complete dismay at the way some members of the board conducted themselves during that meeting. I, for one, have never, as long as I have lived in this town, witnessed any member of a board, committee, or any person attending a meeting, display the total lack of professionalism, civil conduct, and lack of respect that was displayed during that last meeting. This board should be embarrassed and ashamed of the way that meeting was conducted. This board owes the residents of this town an apology. I understand that sometimes temper flare, but you were elected by the residents of this town to lead this town. Therefore, each of you has to control those tempers and emotions. You are required to conduct yourselves in a manner that brings praise upon this town, not laughter and embarrassment. You are required to treat others with respect and dignity, not contempt. A remark was made that alluded to the fact that a teacher is not considered a professional. Ladies and gentlemen, this cannot be further from the truth. Teachers on a daily basis teach, counsel, and guide our children. They meet with parents to assist them in providing guidance to their children. They attend seminars and classes to further their qualifications. To suggest that they are not professionals is demeaning and insulting. This board owes an apology to all teachers for that remark that was made. I beseech you, no, I demand of you, as a resident and voting member of this community, to step back and take inventory of your position, your attitude, your conduct, and how you prepare yourself for each meeting that you come to. And then step forward and lead this community in a way that it should be led. It is apparent from the last meeting that this board is not working in unison. It is not only fine to have and express differences of opinion, it is healthy. But then you have to come together and agree upon a plan of action that best suits this community. I therefore make a suggestion that you give great consideration to reorganizing your board. I wish to thank you for giving this opportunity to speak to you today, and I wish each of you and this board great success, because if you succeed, so does this town. Respectfully, Les Davis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll comment on a couple of things on this letter. One is, I never said a teacher was not a professional. I think I just said that in the announcements, using different words, but I did say that. That is not what my comment the other night was, you know, there was a big spin on Facebook, put on everything I said and did. And I personally don't think we need to reorganize this board. I put, in the six years I've served on this board, I've put up with a lot of stuff, ignored a lot of stuff, but tried to move forward as professional as possible. I understand your frustration, I understand other people's frustration, but I may get in trouble for saying this, but I've, you know, I may not be a super-Christian, but I do speak with the real authority and go to church every week, and I had a lot of conversations with, between myself and God, and I know I was wrong with a couple of things I did, and I plan to never do certain things again. And my first step was speaking on how people will address this board going further. And in six years, I've never done anything, and I don't think one slip-up deserves me being knocked off this chair. No, that's it. But thank you for coming forward, I appreciate that. As we know, there's three thousand residents, and I see eight people here, you know, and we can't hardly get forty people half the time in a town meeting, and it's saddening. And every member of this five-member board works very hard, and it's disheartening for us to do all that work and at a town meeting cross our fingers that we have enough people to hold the meeting. But yet, there'll be hundreds of people to complain if something doesn't go the way they want, you know, so, yep, so thank you. Anybody else like to comment on the letter? Anyone else for public forum? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see if I'm sure this is correct. This is open to public, anybody?
Yeah, if it's something that's not on the agenda, this would be the time to, yep, so go ahead.
My name is Jennifer Lewis, and I applied for the animal control position here in town. I did it because I've been here almost two years now, and I would like to be a part of helping our community with, in regards to animal-human relations, something that I've always worked with animals and I'm very passionate about. And thank you for letting me come to speak, I just wanted to come into this meeting and get my face known.
Okay.
Did you send a letter of interest to the Executive Secretary?
I spoke to the animal control officer, and he gave me paperwork to fill out, and I filled that out along with my resume, and handed that in, and I was interviewed by him and spoke to him. And so I saw you guys were having a meeting, and I figured I would come by.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have correspondence, I don't have any myself. Moving forward to appointments and resignations, we have no resignations. There's an assistant animal control appointment here, Mr. Ranslow, who had resigned in February. Now, after learning this from this young lady, can we table this?
Yeah, I have a question. The chief might be able, did that woman that we spoke about get appointed, sworn in for animal control?
I had a conversation last week when I spoke to Helen, I'm really confused if anyone swung.
Yeah.
Nobody's been appointed, so nobody should have been sworn in.
Yeah.
I think there might have been a misunderstanding in the town clerk's office.
Okay, because I came in Wednesday evening, and the woman was there, and it sounded as if she was being sworn in or, you know, as animal control. And so, I actually introduced myself because she moved into the old homestead of my family, so I had a conversation with her in regards to just general, good luck and well wishes. And then, so now I'm seeing this, now I'm seeing, you know, hearing from Ms. Lewis. So, I think maybe we should table it and get a full picture of what, our appointments are coming up anyways?
Yep, the next meeting, you'll have all of your annual reappointments. I know Gary was given copies of all of the applications and resumes that we received, I think there were four, and I believe he spoke with three of the individuals, meeting face-to-face with two of them. In the meantime, Mr. Ranslow had contacted him, expressing interest in getting his old job back, if you will. And Gary thought that since he was already trained, that would be the best appointment, so that is what he recommended to the board.
Will that, if that reappointment occurs, will Mr. Ranslow have to meet the HCU?
Everybody will, yes.
Yep. My question is, is when the assistant goes out, they go out and they are paid by their call, correct?
Correct, in addition to the stipend that they get twice per year. Then they get the twenty-five dollars per call.
Like an inspector.
I'm just wondering if you had, you know, depending on the, if you could do two, do you hear him saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Two assistants that might be available. Yeah, I'd like to table this and get a feel for what's going on.
Yes.
If we could really expedite it, because the animal calls continue to increase, anyone through there, a photo of a pickup of a hundred-pound tortoise walking down Lincoln Street, we do it all the time, but we really do need an assistant ACL. The amount of calls greatly increase, we handle, but sometimes we can't bring a dog to the vet. This particular call was a live tortoise. Fortunately, I have experience with one, so I brought my house three pound of oil, but I had a hundred-pound tortoise in my house, so.
Not that weird. He liked the pig?
Yeah, so, but the point is, we do have a lot of calls, and we really do need some help on the day these days.
All right. Would the board like to consider appointing Mr. Ranslow just through the end of June? And then you could certainly, you know, table the July first appointment and speak with Gary about the other applicants and...
Yeah, I think we need to be clear on that.
Yeah, make sure that he knows it's only two.
It's only till then.
Well, that would be in your motion through June thirtieth, two thousand.
Your motion to appoint Leonard Ranslow, the animal control officer, effective immediately till June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen?
All in favor? Aye.
We have someone for you.
So...
But I think we also need to have that discussion with Gary to find out the other applicants and...
I would like Gary to get us all those applications as well.
Sure, we can do that.
Would you like Gary into your next meeting, or did you want to schedule something special?
If he's available.
Does he want to do?
So...
Couple of minutes or at the beginning of our workshop on Monday?
Are we gonna...
I don't care. Are we gonna discuss that kennel? Is that gonna come into this? Yeah. I know there was, as far as the kennel goes, there was a resident that sent me information on a kennel that got closed last August, and it was Alder Street, but it wasn't Alder Street Kennel, it was a kennel next to them. So, let's not get confused if that comes around, that, that's, as I talked to the Board of Health in Oxbridge, Mr. Tucker, and he told me, listen, it wasn't Alder Street Kennel that got closed by the state, it was, and by them, it was, it was the, it's kind of like a private kennel, which is next door to them, and people keep thinking it's Alder Street Kennel, it's not.
Is that where the dogs went?
No.
No, dogs went to Alder Street Kennel. This kennel next door is not Ald, it's on, it's obviously on Alder Street, but it's not the one...
I think the report we got was that Alder Street Kennel was...
Well, Alder Street Kennel, that gentleman that was here was displeased with it also, and as well as the chief. But the one that got closed down was not Alder Street Kennel, so make sure that we know that there's two kennels next door to each other, and it's the one, the private one, that was closed down, not...
I'm just wondering if we talk to Gary, maybe at six, and then start our goals and objectives at six fifteen or six twenty?
Yeah.
Just to touch base, see where we're going, what, you know, if...
He's out of work by then, right?
Rather than him waiting for us to finish our discussion, which, you know, it's open-ended, so I'd rather have him come in at first, tell him fifteen minutes, that way that will keep us on track and keep our agenda so that we can move on.
All right, so if Mr. Ranslow can come in tomorrow, if possible, and gets sworn in, then that'll relieve the police to do police stuff.
Absolutely.
All right, very good, let's move to Helen's report.
Nope, I don't have anything.
Oh, right. Old business, Brown Bear Circle Engineering.
Yep, if you recall, Mr. Layden forwarded to us an estimate he received from Graves Engineering for engineering work up on Brown Bear Circle, and again, this is only engineering work to offer how the matter can be fixed, it's not for the actual construction work itself. Mrs. Wing then met with Mr. Malali, and Mr. Malali was in agreement to pay the balance after the twelve hundred that will be from the planning board bond. He will pick up the balance, providing it's out of his FY fifteen budget. I did notify Mr. Layden of that, he contacted Graves, they're all set to go.
Okay.
So I just need a motion from the board to authorize the chair to sign, and Graves is ready to go, and they, if you understand that they have to build the town and complete the work by June thirtieth.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Members' forum, we have nothing posted, hope you miss your business.
New business.
Oh, sorry. Put my glasses on so I can see better, sorry about that. New business, Town Council selection. So we have those three new firms that we interviewed, I was absent for two last, two weeks ago for a funeral, but in the meantime, Mr. Brackett decided not to retire and would like to be considered as a candidate again to continue.
Well, oh, go ahead, John.
I do have reservation about considering Brackett and Lewis.
Lucas, yeah.
Lucas, in that, you know, the strong piece of our interviews with the law firms is that they pretty much can give us twenty-four-hour coverage, the public safety requirement. Most of them provide, you know, a cell phone, you can contact there. So, and I would, my other feeling is that there were two firms that I felt comfortable with, unfortunately, I don't know if I should state my preference right now, but, you know, we're looking at a firm with more than two individuals, firms with five, and with a lot of litigation experience and those kinds of things. And I understand this, for this past week or so, Mr. Brackett wasn't available to respond to a call to the police chief. So that's my reservation there, and I'm not sure...
I agree.
You know, Gary's not a fine job for us, but he has health issues, I believe, and I couldn't support that, to be appointing him.
Yeah, I definitely, at the last meeting, between the three people we interviewed, I was very confident in one, and when I saw Mr. Brackett's proposal, I was wary, just because of the, when he did go out, the type of notification we were giving, and then we actually had to have someone come down and talk to us that everything was okay, and then he came back, and now, you know, you retire, and I think about, what is the office structure when someone announces they retire and the flow of personnel that's moving in there and leaving, and then now they're gonna be back in business, so what is the personnel in that? I, you know, and there's other concerns about the callbacks, and I am confident in the three that we interviewed were qualified, that their rates were appropriate, we had some great insight from the town planner and from the police chief, and I'd like to stay, I'd like not to entertain that proposal.
I'm not entertaining it either, I'm just asking.
Nope, that's my feeling.
The information that I was given. And, you know, like I did say at the town meeting, I thanked him for all his service, and I still stand behind that.
No.
I think this will be part of bringing the town a little more forward than we are.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, could I just have a vote, that there's a motion not to entertain that, just for the procurement file?
Okay.
Come on.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the two other firms that came, the only input I can give is their resumes, so...
Mine, right now, I'm not entertaining preferences, my preference would be Perini Associates. Secondary, then George Williams, and I think Cooper, Manon, and Page is two larger firms for us.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, and I shared my scoring that night, but mine fell in the same line as Joe's.
That's how my, that's how my, excuse me, that's how my resume went, Perini. But I actually went to, I can't remember their name now, out of Worcester, and Coffin and Page weren't on my top three at all, but...
Which one was?
Perini I liked.
In person, was impressive, calm, you know, very down-to-earth, I didn't feel lawyer, Board of Selectmen, I didn't feel that type of relationship, it was, and that was just in the first meeting, that was, they, you know, they seemed very hands-on, knowledgeable, personable, and right there. And I know Joe Layden praised the woman that interviewed Barbara St. Andre and her reputation, which she carries at the planners' meeting, he expressed that, so...
Received compliments as well on Barbara from other sources.
So, anybody like to...
Motion to appoint Perini.
This is effective July first.
Effective July first.
But what we did is, in the RFP, we did include language that effective June fifteenth, they can work with Brackett and Lucas on the transition.
Okay. Okay.
Someone?
Second. You can still vote.
I can vote, you read the resume.
Yeah, based on the input and the resumes.
All right.
And I think the police chief, you sat in on the interviews, and that was your choice also?
It was. And, so, you bring that up, all right, so let me, we'll vote on this, and I'm going to go back to something, so don't let me forget, but, so all in favor?
Aye.
So you, you weren't sure if you could vote, and that's fine. So last meeting, May 4th meeting, you abstained, I, from the vote of the executive secretaries. All right, so then the next, the May 18th meeting, you wanted to vote, but then a resident said you couldn't, point of order, you can't, because you abstained the last time, not true. The only time you cannot, you can abstain from the vote, but now, and because, and your reasoning was because you weren't educated in the situation. At the next meeting, and, and this is, this is from Brackett, I got this information, so the next meeting, where you were willing to vote because you educated yourself on the situation, you could have. The only time you cannot is if you abstained the first time because of personal gain or, well, you know, being related or something to that man, now you still cannot vote the second time. You actually could have voted that.
Okay.
So going forward, it's just FYI for future, that's all. Members' forum, we have nothing. Final public forum. And, all right, so next regular meeting will be June 15th at 7:00 PM, but a reminder, we have a meeting posted for, well, not posted yet, will be posted for this coming Monday, which is June 8th, right?
June 10th.
I have no.
Oh, no, June 8th, you're right, I'm sorry. June 8th, 6:00 with animal control, and then goals will follow.
But our next regular meeting will be at 7:00 PM on June 15th, and we'll now do signatures.
You also have a meeting this Wednesday night.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this Wednesday night, we're meeting.
To interview one building.
The building inspector at 6:30?
Uh, 6:00.
6:00, 6:00 this Wednesday, building inspector interview, so anybody?
I understand it's an interview with the town.
He has, almost exactly three years ago, he came in.
What was, who was he?
From Oxbridge.
Larry Lynch, is his name?
Yeah, Larry Lynch.
He works in Norwood right now, but lives in Oxbridge.
Lives in Oxbridge, yeah.
Yep.
He's the only applicant.
Is it 6:00?
Yes.
Just so you know, we have the town hall building committee meeting at the same time.
Yep.
Are you going to be able to be?
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Listen, if, if nobody comes to that meeting but us, we can do it.
Okay.
In Helen's office, if we had to.
I don't think the town hall committee is going to take that long.
Sure, okay.
All right, so we'll do signatures, and then right immediately following, we'll be adjourned.
Because you've been taking that with COVID? So they're like, can't get to you now? They told you, well, they told you you could take, you know, blood, and she says, I don't look at you as a, I would.
That's just some of the town clerk process. Yep, yep.
So you gotta go back Thursday.
Yep, nope, thank you though.
I have a headache.
Hmm? I knew I put it down somewhere. That was it, right, this and the three?
Yep, and one set of minutes, yep.
Where are the minutes? Did I lose them?
No, they were signed.
Did I sign?
I think it was just the one page.
I don't remember.
The signature's there. We don't have to sign that? Everything's signed?
I don't make excuses for what I did, because that's all they are. Thank you.
Most of you do a job?
All in favor?
Aye.